Open the Town of Rutland Planning Board Meeting of April ninth, twenty twenty-four. Item on the agenda is the minutes of March twenty-sixth.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of March twenty-sixth. Second. Tim, you.
No, Keith, you take it.
All right. Second.
Is there any discussions, any comments, questions, changes, additions, deletions?
That'll look all right.
You're in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
What do you do that Britain?
Yes, sir.
I'm abstaining.
Yeah, I'm abstained.
Correct.
Uh, next item, public hearing, consider amendments to Article three, section eight, B five, one, Article three, section ten, B one, and Article nine, section sixty-four, A to amend. The text to be considered was previously approved. Have, I believe.
And through the chair, Norm?
Yep.
That personal, we gotta get rid of the and sign and change it to an eight.
Yeah.
It says, it says and eight AM to seven PM.
Yeah.
So I saw that and I corrected it when I did the warrant.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I thought that one was. Pack it. My line.
So, Norm, you had, you'd asked me on the phone yesterday about the corrections. Do you have any other questions or are you all set with those?
So. Uh, I don't.
Okay.
Anybody else, any?
Um, I'm just curious where they, these are from. These are just the planning boards request to change or?
No, what happened, Tim, was when I first started, um, Peter and Anita, I guess, were working together to implement previously approved zoning bylaw amendments and make sure they ended up in the zoning bylaws. When they did that, these were three minor things that somehow didn't make it into the new zoning bylaw amendment. So Anita went through them and these, uh, um, I went through them, Peter went through them, we all went through them, and these were three, um, previously approved amendments or part of previous amendments that somehow didn't make it into the new bylaws. So this is a housekeeping article to, um, to clean that up and make sure, uh, everything that was previously approved ends up in the zoning bylaws as it was approved at previous town meeting.
Thank you. Norm, do we need a motion to send this to the, to the select board?
No, we need, we would need a motion, Tim, to recommend favorable action at town meeting on this article.
So moved.
No.
Oh, because you have to close the hearing.
Oh. Hearing first. Any questions, comments?
Yes, a major home market, see, uh, why, why is the Town of Rutland, you know, building by law of the Town of Rutland? Why is that scratched out and mass state put in?
Again, Dick, these were, these were approved at a previous town meeting. They've already been approved. It's just for some reason they weren't changed in the, in the new version of the zoning bylaws because, um, I would suppose, again, I don't want to speak for Dave, I wasn't part of these amendments, but this is accurately what has already been approved at town meeting. So that was, I guess, updated language to reflect current practice.
Dick, I remember this one with the mass state building code.
Yeah, Rutland uses a mass state building code.
Exactly.
Why, why doesn't Rutland have to, why can't it still be there? Why does it have to say mass? Why, I thought home rule ruled.
Yeah.
Think about that, though. It's major home occupation. I know mass and all that. But to me, for crying out loud, you know.
I'm not sure if Rutland has buildings by laws.
They don't.
No, I don't think we do.
There is no.
Everything is by the state building code.
There isn't.
There is not.
The building inspector uses the state building code.
That's bare minimum. You can get more restrictive if you choose, but the building code's bare minimum.
You have to follow the building code.
You can get more restrictive over the building code.
You have to follow the building code unless you go to the legislation ever changed.
Hmm, that was more our work.
In fact, when I saw the, Dick, when I saw the language that said building bylaws of the Town of Rutland, I was really confused because in my twenty-five years, I've never seen a town have their own, hack their own building bylaws. It's always gone by the, uh, the state building code.
Um, may I make a recommendation that they go back through all the town reports from day one and find out if it's been changed?
Would that be a zoning bylaw?
I am starting to feel that there are a lot of things that this town overlooks that has been voted on a long time ago.
I mean, certainly, Dick, I mean, we can, you know, myself and Anita, we can go through past bylaw amendments that were approved at town meeting to make sure that everything ended up accurately in the zoning bylaws. I guess that's what you're asking?
Correct.
Yes. Yeah, we can certainly do that, Dick, to see if there are other housekeeping articles that are necessary at future, at future town meetings.
I would think that it would be in a record of a town meeting that Rutland adopted the mass state building code.
Would have been a while ago, of course.
Probably, probably, yes.
Like everything else, it gets, it disappears.
Gets forgotten.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions, comments, or anything else? Anything for the public on this one? Here, nothing, no, nothing, a motion to close the hearing.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um.
So, Norm, was that vote five zero zero? Because I can't see Tim or Britain.
Yes.
It's five zero zero. Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Um, so next would be a motion to make a favorable recommendation.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on this one? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Okay, next public hearing. We now have a public hearing to consider an amendment to the zoning map of the Town of Rutland to change the zoning designation of the property known as one eighty-four Maple Ave, also known as parcel ID zero three seven eight twenty-six, as shown on the most recent zoning map, from resident sixty to Town Center two. Uh, and.
Yes, thank you for, uh, thank you for having me. I'm moving forward. This is, as it reads, to change that parcel from residential sixty to Town Center two. This is the parcel just south of Countryside Estates. It's, um, it's got about three hundred feet of frontage on Maple Ave. And we are, we're looking to basically extend that, that zoning further south. So it's, it's a continuation of the Town Center two zoning, which is the, the newer zoning district that the town created. Which carries through most of Maple Ave, and we're looking to extend that down.
And I'll correct that it's not continued because lot twenty-five is not considered a TC two district.
Right. It's, it's a continuation of the non-residential, I guess, zoning.
Yep, yep, yep.
To how far?
We're looking.
Only to your lot or beyond?
No, twenty-six.
It just includes the one parcel. So it's, yeah, lot twenty-six.
I gotta ask, if that's, that's all you got, Mark, you have a move?
Uh, that's all I have, yep.
What's the intent of that lot to use for TC two?
Uh, we don't have a, we don't have a defined use at this time. It just, it would open up some different possibilities.
Okay. I guess from the board's perspective, um, again, this is my opinion. I've looked over, um, the TC two district, and from a residential standpoint, it gives a lot of more freedom, reduced frontage, reduced acreage, all of that. So I'm okay with that. The, the problem I have is I don't, and I've been thinking about this over this entire discussion is I don't want to give that whole parcel TC two. I want it to be equal to what the other TC two districts are, which, and I apologize, I think it, I don't have it in front of me because I didn't bring it with me, but I think it's three hundred feet deep. I'm trying to get that right now to make sure I, I sent it to you two guys, but I couldn't. I'm trying to find the email I sent you. It's got the PDF because I explicitly broke out that PDF.
So, Tim, could I piggyback on your point about the frontage and the setbacks?
Yep.
Um, people need to be aware that if this parcel is rezoned from residential to CT, uh, TC two, rather, um, not only is there a minimum front yard setback, but there's a maximum front yard setback to ensure that, um, the, whatever uses go in there, whatever structures are a little bit closer to the road and that the parking is to the side or rear of the building. So, um, I thought people should know that. It's, it's, it's the only, it's the only district in town that has a maximum front yard setback to kind of create that town center feel.
For commercial, for residential, it doesn't have that. It just has reduced, if I'm not mistaken. Maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, um, let me, hold on, let me open that up, Tim. I have my zoning bylaws right here.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah, let me, let me check on that. Hold on.
There it is sent.
First two districts have the table.
No, actually, I think it's across the board, Tim. I've got the table open right now, and I think the, I think the ma- maximum, hold on a sec. So it says maximum front setback, number four. No, it doesn't differentiate for everything.
All right, I thought. Huh.
Yeah.
All right, I.
But the planning board may authorize a greater setback due to topographic constraints to facilitate a consistent village design or minimize impacts on surrounding properties. So you're right, Tim, you can authorize a larger setback. So, um, Mr. Elbag, if he were to get this rezoning, come forward with the project, there is some flexibility there at the board's discretion.
Okay, good, thanks. If we're gonna move it. Yeah.
A full lot.
I, I will say, if you, if you don't move it as a full lot, it makes it a little more difficult. And I guess my, my case to keep it the full lot is that it's not that big of a piece of land, so it's likely not going to be divided. I think even if it were Town Center two and we wanted to divide it, I think the most we could get was, would be two residential lots. So I guess my, my case is if we split the zoning on the lot, it's really just only going to make confusion and, you know, it won't really have an impact on the development, per se.
And I, I would have to agree with Mr. Elbag. Um, if you split the zone on that, if you split zoning on that lot, I know it's consistent with the TC zoning district, but, um, it gives the board a little bit less flexibility to work with the applicant on the location of that building because it wouldn't be all zoned Town Center.
Well, and it, and it would match the width of the commercial zone to the north at Countryside Estates.
The only reason I, again, I'm just trying to be fair to other, because we've got other properties in TC one that, you know, we did a third of their property as in the TC district and two-thirds outside it. So I'm just, all I'm trying to do is be fair to the other people that have, that have to live with this. I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm not saying I don't disagree with it. Just want them, want the board to be aware that if we're going to be fair about the TC, we should do it across the board and not spot. That's all I'm bringing up. I'll, I'll live with the board's decision. I just wanted to bring that up.
It's just, I think when, when we created these TC districts, uh, it would have been extremely complicated to try to describe if we did nothing but confused lots. So instead, we simply decided to choose a distance from the right of way.
Correct.
Of, of the road, uh, for the whole distance. And I realize we did definitely create some split lots, uh, but I don't know. I, I don't think I'd be particularly in favor of creating another split lot here.
Yeah. Seems like a lot of houses would already, are already established along this area too. So it's not like you're gonna, most people want to build behind there.
I do find it kind of interesting that all of these lots below that, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty-two, is all a straight line.
Yeah, I noticed that, Norm.
So, Norm, to, to add to your point, um, if the, if the, if this rezoning were to happen and Mr. Elbag would come back, would come forward before the board with some kind of development, the board has the right to work with the applicant on establishing some kind of buffer, um, to the rear of the property against that residential zoning district. So if it's not a split zone lot, if it is the entire lot, then the board has the flexibility to work with the applicant on creating a design that will work for that area to protect those residential homeowners to the rear.
Two, I gotta ask a question, and John, you're gonna be the best one to answer it, is I don't think we do under ten, let me get to B. Ten B says the residential is by right without site plan approval under residential uses. If you go to ten B, section B, it says residential use, recognizing the Town Center's tradition included a mix of uses, planning.
What page, Tim?
Uh, page twenty-one.
Okay, thank you.
John, the by right does, uh, there is residential by right, but in the dimension, if you go by the dimension table, that's what I referred to earlier. If we went with by right residential and not a site plan, the by right residential would just be two lots. So the, I don't know that the zoning split would necessarily impact that. The by, the by right definition of this would be two single-family house lots. Which is, isn't our intent.
I just, the, the reason for the board, Norm, I was bringing this up is the reduction, you know, with twenty thousand square foot lots. Ah, so that means twenty thousand, that's a half acre, correct?
Yeah. The limiting factor, Tim, would be the frontage.
Yeah, yeah, I was seeing that with the hundred twenty-five feet, since you've only got three hundred.
Right.
That puts you to.
And, Tim, to play devil's advocate in this case, if Mr. Elbag wanted to do one or two family, he could have just done it by right with the current zoning.
Correct, yeah.
So.
But what about, um, let me ask, um, I'll be devil's advocate. What about putting in a duplex, uh, group like Jimmy did up in the TC one, TC two district? How does that play out in this?
Well, that would be, I, that would fall under, it would be duplexes, but with the number of units, it would most likely be considered multifamily.
Yep.
Right.
Which would be a special permit, I believe.
I don't, is it? I thought under, I thought multifamily and single family was grouped under residential, but maybe I'm wrong.
Uh, no, no, single and two family are allowed by right, but I believe multifamily needs a special permit.
Yeah, I think that's right, or at least a site plan review, one of the two.
Says single and two-family dwellings are allowed by right.
And, and that's.
Correct.
That's the two-lot scenario.
Two-family would be considered multifamily.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, Britain.
Yeah, so by right, yes, he could.
And that, that's what I wanted to make aware. So if, can you do mul- uh?
Could do two groups, two, so four total.
Okay.
If I'm not misunderstanding the situation.
Right, right.
So let me clarify, Mark.
Total four units, four occupied units on this lot.
Mark, you're looking to rezone this to TC two, correct?
Correct, yep.
My apologies. Looking at the table, there is no maximum front yard setback. It's not applicable. Minimum is fifteen feet. My apologies, I misspoke.
It's actually, it's, just to be exact, it's two, two hundred and sixty-ish feet of frontage, somewhere around two hundred and sixty. Code is less than three hundred.
Okay, good enough. I just wanted to ask some questions and make sure I had everything squared.
Yes, actually, here, Tim, at the bottom of page twenty-three.
Yep, I'm getting.
As, as the intent of the Town Center District is to provide a mix of residential and non-residential uses, the planning board may approve multifamily residential uses, three or more dwelling units by special permit. Where units are in addition to business uses proposed on the site or where they complement existing non-residential uses in the district. So there are some stipulations to that.
Okay, thanks, I missed that one. I missed the section, the, the second page of section four. So you got, so that's under. Huh. How much is, how many trees are left all the way to the back? Is it, half the lots empty or is it just visually when you?
Right now, most of the lots wooded, probably s- at least seventy-five percent.
Okay.
There was an existing house there that's been.
Yeah. I gotta ask you, Norm, what is that square piece of brick? Was that a fireplace? It's chimney? I'm just curious.
It might be the old well.
Don't tell me it's a cistern, because I was gonna.
It might be the old well.
Okay, it was. I, I asked this guy, and he goes, no, they wouldn't, or I said, no, they wouldn't use brick, but, yeah. That must, that's been the early twenties and thirties. Okay, thanks, I just curiosity. As I drove by to take a look at it, you're right, the front is, uh, that's the only thing left, and then there's just a little up there, and then the rest is all wooded all the way back.
I, I thought the, um, the Town Center District was an overlay district. I thought that, that, so when we voted that, everything.
Please introduce yourselves.
Yeah, Tommy, name rank.
Yeah, we know.
Okay, so I thought that you still could do whatever was zoned before, but this was in addition to that. And I just, then I just want to make a comment. What Tim said earlier, I, I remember voting because I have a lot that, the same thing, the three hundred feet divides my, one of my lots in two different ways. And I specifically asked for that. I said, well, it doesn't make sense to have a lot that is partially one thing and partially something else. And it was opted not to change any of those. And I remember Addison was on the board at the time and specifically said, because I asked several, you guys walked down the street with me of looking at those lots. And, and, uh, you didn't make any exceptions for a lot line that was fifteen, twenty feet away from where the three hundred foot came. Or I, I'm not sure that's the right number, but a short distance that way or a short distance the other way from the main street dimension and from the Maple Ave dimension.
Through the chair, Norm, if I'm not mistaken, the residential use of the TC for residential, you know, from the lot, you know, like behind you, like R forty behind you or part of your property, that didn't, the TC was an enhancement, adding the ability to do business in other portions.
Yeah.
So it wasn't taken away, Tommy, it was adding abilities of your existing.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but it did, but we did set a certain, you know, three hundred feet back is where the TC opts, and then from there, R forty takes over, which is the standard residential design.
Correct.
So.
My understanding was it didn't take any of the other rights away, it just added to them in that, in those zones.
Correct.
Correct, yeah. Right.
He gave, he gave other opportunities for those zones.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. So it, to Mark's point, if he wanted to build a hot, two houses on that three hundred and divide it up by one fifty and one fifty, he could do that. But he also has the opportunity to, um, put, um, business there.
Correct.
Something else in that area, if it was, if it was so past the town, I don't want to.
Along with, business and residential.
Correct, yeah, which you can't do in R forty.
Correct.
So that's all the TC was adding to it.
Right, all by special permit.
All by best, correct.
By special permit.
Yep, and all the other things to go with it, the parking, the, um, landscaping, all that stuff that's in the TC.
Yep.
Anything else?
And John, to, to, just to let you know, this is our former fire chief, so we all know him very well, Tom Rushala.
What's your address again?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm more concerned about people who may be in the audience or listening in, Dick, who, who don't know who these people are. So, um, it's more for the public at large than for the board or my, or staff. It's more for the, it's, it's more for the people who may be viewing in who don't know who these people are, who don't have the history with them.
Plus hearing, we gotta give name rank, and it's true, name and address for, to make it put down.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, I'm.
Any other questions, comments from anybody?
I'm sorry, Mark, it's R sixty where you're at.
Yes. R sixty.
Cuts off on the road that crosses. Okay.
Over the comments, questions?
You know, the lot's not that deep. I'd say, you know, for example, thirteen, it's a little further up. You know, that thing goes real far into the woods. I mean, it's not the same situation, so I can see why, you know, you wouldn't want to just cramp all the way to the back of the lot in some of these, and you went with three hundred, but, um, I'm not opposed to a full, full lot.
Which, you know, a- any of the owners of those lots could certainly also petition the town.
Correct.
To have the remainder of their property included in the TC two.
Yeah.
Or TC one.
Yeah, so they could come in, Norm, and ha- ask as a, I'm fine with that, I'm good. All right.
Are we all set?
So we're just voting on supporting it or favorable action?
Yeah, recommending favorable or unfavorable action.
After we close the hearing.
Right, I just want to make sure where we're going.
This will. Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Hold on a second, did we ask for any public?
I did.
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear that, so I'll make sure.
Yes, we did, we were.
I know. I guess I'll do motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um.
I need a motion for an action.
We could, we can make a motion for a recommendation. Uh, is that necessary at this meeting?
Um, well, yeah, usually at the end of the public hearing, the board can do one of through three things, either recommend favorable action, recommend unfavorable action, or the, I mean, the board doesn't have to vote support if it doesn't want to. I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing forcing you to vote some kind of action on the article. You could just simply let it go to town meeting and let the chips fall where they may, if you'd like.
Have we done this in the past for the citizens petitions? That's what I'm trying to remember, and I'm having a brain death. But the last one was over, um, at Honey, where the honey farms used to be, when that was changed. Did we vote? I mean, I, I have no problem voting favorable. I just want to make sure that we're consistent.
If, if Brighton can pull it up quickly on his computer, I believe on the town clerk's page.
Yep.
The warrant for last year's annual town meeting should be linked there, and you'd be able to see on the warrant if they recommended any action on that or not. I know that the select board and the finance committee do not usually make recommendations on citizens petitions, but I believe the planning board has if it's related to a planning board matter, but I could be mistaken. It would have been last May.
I mean, this is zoning, it's under our review.
Right.
So I'm, I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure we're consistent.
That just, just depends on whether the moderator asked for our recommendation.
There's no links, there's no link to it.
Yeah, that, that's like the only one that it did. We don't have.
Oh, no. Thank you for checking.
Yeah. Well, let me ask a question, Norm. We typically have a meeting before the town meeting.
Well, we, we have another regular meeting before town.
Yeah, so should we just, I mean, Mark, I'm not, I'm not like saying, I just want to make sure I'm covered. I mean.
Tim, if I may, I was just gonna say.
Well, gentlemen, it, with, with the public hearing closed, you can't accept any new testimony.
I was just gonna add that the select board is gonna be, uh, signing the final warrant next Tuesday, April sixteenth. So if you wanted something to be publicly in writing on the warrant, you'd have to make that decision tonight. Otherwise, it would just be a verbal at town meeting.
I think the town does look to the board for zoning. You know, it's certainly, that's why I brought it before the board, board early to get, to get a rec- recommendation from this board, or I wasn't even gonna move forward with it, because I think it, I think it goes a long way with the town if the planning board is in favor.
I'll defer to the more senior members of the board if this is where we, I, I just, I don't know if you've, if we jump, you know, if we put support on things like this, or if we just, we just leave it, let it, leave it up to the public to decipher whether or not they want to make that vote, or if we endorse it or we deny it.
The only, the only thing I can say is I know I have never stood up and said that we make no recommendation.
Okay.
Great, if I had about special town meeting from twenty twenty-two, what about November twenty twenty-two? Because I think that's the one when they did the.
I have minutes.
Because I think that's the one when they did the marijuana.
I have minutes, I have minutes, I don't have a warrant.
Look at them, check the minutes, it would be probably the last warrant article, and I believe that was for the marijuana facility down at, um.
Can I just say, your memory is incredible.
I don't need to be compared to the marijuana facility, but I just mean.
No, I'm sorry, no, I just wanted to see if they made a recommendation or not.
Maybe we could use a different example on that one.
Sorry, the only one I think that's linked.
What was the date of that town meeting?
It would have been, I think, November eighteen, there's.
The other thing too is, I think, master of law.
Damn it, damn, I have anything.
Oh, yeah.
Might as well only change to the planning board for this reason.
Right, but on the forms, on the form seven that goes to the attorney general's office, under re- under report of the planning board to town meeting, it has three different options, either written, report, oral report, or neither. So the planning board doesn't have to give a report to town meeting if it doesn't want to.
The only thing, the only person, the only board that commented on was finance committee, and they had no recommend, they had no action.
What, yeah, which usually they do on citizens' petitions.
I don't see anything for the planning boards.
Okay.
Act, rather favorable or unfavorable. Yeah, I'm looking at, uh.
Oh, yeah, I have an old one here, I think.
Here's article twenty-seven, the night from Nov- from twenty nineteen. Citizens' petition, uh, zoning amendment, um, uh, let's see, uh, to replace section blah blah, incorporate. I think this is the one that, uh, um, there's no, the only thing it's recommended in there is the finance recommended favorably for the citizen petition on the zoning amendment. Planning board's not even in here on that. I'm looking at the November nineteenth. I just, I wanted to make sure, there's, is there another citizens' petition? There's another citizens' petition that's in here.
But I don't believe there's anything in MGL that precludes you from making a recommendation if you.
No, there's not.
No.
Oh, and I'm, I'm, I'm just, I have a problem, just wanna make sure.
Mass general law does not differentiate between, um, zoning by law amendments that are citizens' petition versus those that are brought far forward by a municipal board.
I don't see one where the plan, so far.
I'm, I'm the same way, all I see is finance committee recommending.
There are planning board ones, but therefore, they're not for citizens' petitions.
Correct.
I just don't wanna.
I don't mind, I don't mind doing it, just a precedent that I'm trying to stay away from.
Right.
Well.
Tim, the, Tim, these are case by case basis, so I would argue there's no, there's no setting a precedent on these things. Each bylaw amendment is its own thing.
Why wouldn't somebody come back and say, why didn't you do it on the previous ones?
Well, the situation may be different, the neighborhood may be different, the scope of the rezoning or the nature of the bylaw amendment may be totally different. Like I said, when I was in Rentham, um, a citizens' petition came forward a year and a half after the town just adopted some pretty strict, um, standards for drive-through facilities, and a citizens' petition article came in to slash those requirements in half, lot size, queuing distance, everything, and the planning board said absolutely not, because this flies in the face of what we just passed a year and a half ago. So, again, it depends on the situation.
Yeah, but the one I'm reading in twenty nineteen has to do with the village center district, which is what we're talking about here, except it's TC.
It's TC.
So that's the reason why I'm just reading up.
I, I have, I have one here. The planning board, the planning board favored the zoning change.
For citizens, Mark?
Yep, uh, this one is February eighteenth, nineteen ninety-two, uh, from Mister, Mister Johnson. There was no opposition at the hearing at the planning board held, and that the planning board voted, fa- or the planning board favored the zoning change unanimously passed. I might have another one in here.
Sounds a bit bad.
But this is, actually, this is, uh, in a test, true copy from the clerk.
Okay, I mean, again, I don't have a problem, just wanna make sure. Hear anything, be consistent, so.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
I know each, each, each cases, yeah, I know that each case is its own case, but we have to be consistent.
And that may sound.
In all fairness, gentlemen, in all fairness, that was nineteen ninety-two. I was in college at the time, so.
Well, that's part of the case, not a.
It, it, it hasn't been a lot of zoning changes since, so it's.
Norm, get it, let it back, I might add some citizens' petition.
Yep.
Uh, Peter Crane Nate's Way, it is my recollection from all the town meetings, I have recorded that planning board generally has a recommendation of some kind, irrespective of whether it makes it to the minutes, but the only way I can prove that is to go through all the recordings.
Was that, and that was for citizens' petition specifically?
Absolutely, I'm, I'm thinking of the one where it was the, we wanna change town zoning near Four Corners, and we wanna change, uh, the, um, the business district up on sixty-eight, those were both on the same.
Yeah, that was the motorcycle repair thing.
Yeah, the motorcycle repair, yes.
That's what I'm looking at right now.
Those were, those were, those had recommendations from the planning board, to my recollection.
They didn't put them in the minutes.
They just didn't put them in the minutes, that's right.
They only put finance committee recommends favorably, that's it.
Well, because as, as always, that's the requirement of mass general law, that planning board, sorry, that finance committee make a recommendation on every warrant article.
Now, to your point, Pete, it looks like the moderator asked Norm questions about it, and we expressed our, as the board expressed our thumbs up to that, so, that's about as much as I could say, based on what I'm seeing here for minutes. I mean, I, I don't have a problem, Norm, in, in, uh, making a motion to recommend favorably to the town.
Yeah, and I'll take that little bit, and I so move.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, before we go, go any further, this is, this is still a little bit ambiguous.
I just happen to have something with me tonight, I don't know, what do you want, I could have, I could have looked for something more.
Happen to have something for ninety-two.
Well, it's a different project I'm working on, I.
It wasn't that long ago, come on, knock it off.
There hasn't been that many zoning changes since ninety-two.
Really?
This is, this is just, it says, Mister Johnson stated that there was no opposition at the po- at the hearing, uh, the planning board held, and the planning board favored the zoning change. It didn't say we made a favorable recommendation.
I just, I thought there was.
Right, but to say that, I think you need to take some sort of action.
And maybe John can answer this, I thought with citizens' petitions, the boards stay out of it, not just ours, but any boards, that's what I remember. I could be wrong.
The only regulation with that is we cannot change the language of the article. We also cannot provide supporting documentation with the article, it can, that's up to the, the, um, applicant to get up on the floor and, and speak to it.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, did I hear a motion?
I did make a motion to support, to recommend favorably.
And a second.
Oh, I second that.
And a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes as five to zero.
I do think, Norm, it's an advantage for the town, so that's the reason why.
Well, my, my, o- other side of it is that I just don't like the idea of the planning would not making a recommendation. It sounds like we're.
I just remember when Dave was here, and John, this isn't any flexing you, but I thought at one time, somebody had said something, and I, Dave's in my mind, that for citizens' petitions, boards and committees stay out of it. They can review it, in this case, because of zoning, we have to, we have to hold a hearing by law.
I, I did, I did come in to see if the board wanted to sponsor it, but it was actually easier just to do it as a citizens' position, petition, rather than go through the whole process with John.
Yeah.
That's why we did it that way.
Okay.
So, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Hey, Norm, before we start this next public hearing, can I ask a question of Peter?
He can't come through the door anymore, because it's sealed.
Well, I, I emailed Peter the site plans for this next public hearing to, thank you, Peter, there we go, thank you.
Oh, yes, put it up on.
Better than what I got.
That's it. Thank you, Peter.
Okay. We next have a public hearing on the petition of the applicant Scott Latour and the owner Philip, uh, Raptus. For a special permit pursuant to mass general law, and I've got that, and it's only by law for a motorcycle repair business and associated site improvements at the property identified as one ninety-one Berry Paxton Road. Also identified as parcel zero one two B one, and is located in the village centered zoning district. So, do we have the applicants here? Anything you'd like to present to us?
The owner or the applicant?
Either one.
Yeah, he, Scott's here, I'm here, we're applying for the special permit for the, uh, motorcycle shop at my property at one ninety-one Berry Paxton Road.
Which, okay, we also have a memo from John, I believe regarding this.
Put some data to that application, correct?
I don't see the application at all.
Well, that's thing wasn't, it's not in my online package, that's the reason I'm, I was gonna mooch off dick.
I don't, I don't think the application is in our package, the actual application.
Well, Norm, I apologize, but I didn't realize physical copies of the application went in the packets, I didn't include them in the physical packet. This is the first time I put packets together for the board for this meeting, so I didn't realize that physical copies of the application were included in the, in the packets. Normally.
I, I, I guess my first question is, have you determined that the application is complete?
Um, it was, um, the only thing that they are missing, because there's been some, if, if I can, if I can sum up, because the applicant was very brief. This was originally presented as an application for, and at the pre-application meeting, as a motorcycle repair shop in the existing building. Somewhere along the line, the scope has changed to include the proposed building you see on the plan, and from what I understand, more than just motorcycle repair, to include any type of motor vehicle. So I was hoping that the applicant would explain in a little bit more detail what they're planning on doing with the property. The one item that they are missing from this application, that for this building, for this new building, is they haven't included building elevation plans for the new building, to show the height or what the building is gonna look like.
Yeah, and we've, and through the chair, we, the last time I remember we did that, that was with the, um, the car wash, we were asking for some, some general details for anything like that, so, I, I would, I would presume I'd want the same thing for this. That'd be, that'd be my request. Since we've been through this once before.
Because what, because obviously, whatever the use is gonna be, I mean, there are two different types of special permitted uses in this zoning district. One would be small repair, small appliance repairs, the other one would be a service station, so, depending on the scope of what they wanna do, they're, they're somewhat different special permits, somewhat different uses, so that, um, that is, um, pretty important detail. And with the intention of the district being neighborhood scale development, that would also make the review of this project potentially a little bit different.
And John, from my perspective, just from the engineering standpoint, I like to see, you know, what's the building gonna be used for, is there gonna be welders in it, so do I need three phase there? Where am I pulling the power from, or pole's gonna have to go in? Is it gonna be driveways, all that good stuff that we ask, um, the previa applicant with the car wash, or what we, what the expectations for the building was? And of course, that was all provided in a, I don't wanna call it detailed engineering, but basically sketches of what we were gonna do, so we could see the layout from a plot plan. And I'm not seeing.
And I know the fire chief has questions, depending on if they still intend to use the existing building.
Yeah, see, I can't, I don't know where the driver is coming into this. From a plan review standpoint, for me, um, just in, in what I'm seeing, and, and the, the very limited, uh, briefing we got from the applicant, there's, there's, there's not enough information here for me right now to really go in and ask questions that need to be asked. Um, I don't really, I don't know that, I know that all the boxes are checked, as far as a complete application may go, but this isn't enough information to really, unless somebody from your team or owner really wants to walk us through exactly.
I can.
You know, what you're proposing, and, and an e- in-depth explanation on what we're looking at, kinda what these facilities are gonna be used for, that would be fantastic.
Okay, oh, yeah, I could do.
That would help out a lot, so.
Scott Latour, um, I'm the owner of Latour's Twisted Spoke. We have a mass registered repair station, we can work on anything. The proposed forty by sixty, I had submitted something, but I don't know where it is. It's a two bay garage, in order to be, um, accepted by the state of Massachusetts, you have to have a minimum fourteen by fourteen door, and it can't be any smaller than forty-five feet. We are licensed to do commercial, non-commercial, and motorcycle inspections. So, we also do, uh, I have the motorcycle side of it, and I also have, we do anything from machinery down to lawnmowers. So, um, as I said, we are registered with the state of Massachusetts. The new building would be, one bay of it would be specifically for commercial and non-commercial inspections. The state classifies one bay just for it, you cannot work out of it, it has to be set up specifically for inspections through the state. The other bay would be for, uh, diesel repairs, um, we do hydraulics, uh, basically anything that needs to be done. So, um, I've been in Charlton for fourteen years, and haven't had any issues whatsoever. We submitted the, um, uh, through the local police department, we had no complaints against us in those, in those fourteen years. That's pretty much what it is. The front existing building would be for specifically the motorcycle shop and small engines. The back bay would be for, uh, the bigger stuff, machinery, tractor trailers, uh, we do tires.
Personal vehicles, is that?
If you came in for an oil change in your, in your pickup, that's where it would be done. And everything that we do, we dispose of it, I have companies that dispose of the oil and stuff, and, um, we, I have.
Let's all license through the state, correct? That's all licensed through the state and governed by.
Yes, I, I do have a, a license for that, for the waste oil, so.
On the existing building, is, so, on the existing structure that's there, you're going to be renovating that to a level so that it is a motorcycle repair shop solely, or are you also gonna do any sort, like, I mean, is it strictly for motorcycles?
Motorcycle, anything from motorcycles down, uh, snow, uh, snowmobiles, snow blowers, lawnmowers, um, anything. Because my intention would be to put a ten by ten garage door on the, would be the east side of the building with a new ramp.
So that'd be, uh, towards the back, where, wait, uh, I'm sorry, where's my north arrow? See it? The Berry Road goes like that, so it's gonna be, I, I know what you're, I know what you're talking about.
That, that would be.
Backside, right.
Left hand side.
Left hand side.
Left hand side.
The left hand side, where the proposed parking is?
Yep, there would be a, a ramp there with a ten by twelve, ten by ten garage door to drive in. There'd be, uh, one, one handicap spot and two, I think it was spots.
On the existing, on the existing building, are you going to have any sort of, um, it's kind of a stupid question, but like retail or anything like that, is it, or it's just strictly a shop?
Uh, it's minimal, we have T-shirts and stuff, that's about it.
Okay.
So.
And offices, obviously, and all that stuff, yeah, okay.
Doing cars, uh, you said cars, but ATVs or side by sides, anything like that, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, off, off-road and stuff.
In the main building, yes, yep, not cars.
Yeah.
But go-karts, side by sides, snowmobiles. The proposed building would be everything else.
The one, yeah.
Yes, through Norm, I didn't have a problem when I read this for the existing building, doing all of that. It's just his proposed building, I, I, it just seems like I need more detail.
Among, among other things, I'm, I don't know if some people are reading this along with me, this is Dave's.
Yeah, memorandum, yep, yep.
And it seems to me he's, he's got some, several, uh, what to me would be outstanding.
Yes, let's get it right here.
Points, uh, on this whole thing. And.
Yeah, so, is John saying that there's a special permit for, like, just opening the, the main building?
Well, there's, there are two different.
And then you're saying, you have to apply for another, for the bit, for the.
Tim, hold on, there are two, Tim, the two different uses here would conceivably be considered two distinct uses, because let me open up my zoning. two distinct uses, because let me open up my zoning bylaws to the Village Center District. As special permitted, non-resident, special permitted uses in the B.C. District, um, two B says gasoline and/or service stations, but then there's another one, two E, that is small appliance or equipment repair, including but not limited to household appliances, lawnmowers, chainsaws, et cetera. So, if, if the board, you know, adds up to the board's interpretation, um, if the board considers these to be, you know, two distinct things, two different special permits, um, or if the board thinks that this entire project can be included as one special permit.
That's a logistics question.
Well, on the same road, there are, there used to be multiple mechanics, I believe there's Malls down the road is a mechanic, and for years down at the Four Corners, there was Car Craft doing mechanic work as well, so, I mean, the whole Village Center District is, should be permitted to have this type of business, I believe.
I do too.
Well, can I ask a question? My name's Mark Lavoy, I live at two-eleven Barry Paxton, uh, unit eighteen, which is to the right of that facility. My concern is there's wells that service the eighteen units, uh, condominium complex there at Fox Run. Um, gasoline and oil, I, I know you, you're, uh, permitted and everything, but my concern is any contamination to the ground. Um, where the other machine, our car shop was, that was a, uh, super fun site at one point too, so we monitor for that to make sure that doesn't get into our wells. But I'm also worried about the noise. Um, I used to live up in the Laconia area and Bike Week, and the Harley's opening up when they leave the shops. I know you can't control your customers, but that's what the people on my street are worried about, is the noise of the motorcycles leaving. We didn't have any idea that there's another building going in for additional work. Cause in the back of that is where our septic system is too.
And there's a septic system for the building here as well, on the far left. So, one of the notes as well is to, back to the gas and, and oil is, um, you know, stormwater management plan, specifically for this site, given volatility of things used. We would wanna see that for sure to make sure that we're not gonna have a runoff situation.
Sean McLaughlin, one seventy-five Barry Paxton Road. Um, my concern is it's, it's being, it seems like it's being changed to industrial. And that's not what Center Village District was set up for. Uh, you have tractor trailers, right now it's, it, it looks terrible, nothing against you, it looks terrible, there's a bunch of junk cars in the back. There's an oil truck in the back that's sitting there, there's fifteen tractor trailer boxes out there. There was almost three accidents, uh, with a track, cause a tractor trailer was pulling in. It's just, motorcycle shop's one thing, I, you know, I don't have a problem with that, but with all this tractor trailers and now they're talking heavy equipment, it's not an industrial site. Diesel mechanic and everything, that's, that's totally different than what the Center Village District was set up for.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm struggling with too, is that, I mean, there's been car repair, I, I get it, there's been car repair up there, but ten-wheelers and cat diesel equipment.
Excavators.
Excavators, I, I haven't, that's not what the Village Center was designed for, it was, I mean, that's, again, that's my opinion. So that's why I'm struggling with, I need more detail than just proposed building. I mean, I know if you explained it, I get that, I just, I don't feel, I mean, I have, me personally, the motorcycle existing building, I'm on board with that, I'm, I'm good with that portion of it. It's just when you get to that back portion where I'm struggling, so, um, i- if this is gonna be one special permit, to me, this has to be an extension to this hearing to get more information. If they're gonna be broken up into two special permits, then I wouldn't have an, me personally, wouldn't have an issue on the board approving the motorcycle in the existing building, but beyond that, I can't go any further than that.
Uh, my, my own preference would be that the, the whole project be taken as a single special permit. Uh, I just think, loo- looking at John's memo here, there's just an awful lot of issues that I think need to be, need to be covered.
That's true.
And among other things, uh, I would definitely wanna do a, uh-
Sightwalk?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we need to do that minimum.
As a board. And I would actually propose, see, our next planning board meeting, John, is going to be on vacation. I'm just going to suggest, maybe it's a little bit early in the game here, uh, that we continue the public hearing to the first meeting in May, and that, beginning of that meeting be a-
A sidewalk, I agree, I think, I think it's a great idea.
See what the applicant, if they're, if they're amenable to that.
Can I get a copy of that memo? Do I have a basis to go by?
Yeah, I don't see any room, why not?
Yeah, if one of you gentlemen wants to give your copy to the applicant right now, you can, if not, I can send it to him tomorrow.
Yeah, many offers here.
Thank you. Would the bay doors be on the front, uh, facing the street, for the diesel and?
No, we just explained it's on the, it's on the, the, the left-hand side of the building.
For the main building.
The main building.
But the other building you're building.
There would be on, the two doors would be on the forty-foot side, not, not the long side.
Uh, right, left?
Be on the left.
Okay.
So just another, another item, I, and I think, John, it may be in that letter, just as far as what you're going to be paving, and the scope of paving as, as it, as it relates to the proposed building. If you're gonna have doors on the left side, obviously you're gonna have pavement going up to that, so I would just, just small details like that, I know the engineer's probably trying to save you a little bit of money by doing details like that, but that's the stuff that we need to see as well, to see what, you know, where you're gonna actually be able to put, um, if, you know, if approved equipment, stuff like that, you know, people that drop their bikes off, I assume you'd lock those up, but, um, in the building, yeah.
Nothing goes outside.
Yeah, okay, so, or vehicles, or whatever it may be, you know, we'd need a plan for that. And shown on here what your entry and exits look like, um, you know, and that, we could talk about that at the sidewalk as well, so.
Who's, who's that commenting, please?
That's me.
Is that Britten?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I can only see the plan, I can't see any of you right now.
So, you guys are suggesting that we keep it as one single special permit, or?
But that's my, that's my preference, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks.
I would agree with that, just given the, I mean, it, if they drop the building, then they, you know, we're still issuing that one permit, they could come back. There's nothing stopping them, but this is part of their full plan, then I think we need to have it all under one.
Yeah, I, 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 Britten, I'm with you, I, I'm okay with a full special permit if we're gonna include the proposed building. Um, but again, it, like you said, they wanna drop it and just do the one, I'm fine with that too.
Yeah, cause they can always, Tim, to your point, they can always, if, depending on how the conversation goes going forward, they can always amend the scope of their plan during the public hearing.
I just think we need to move the, I think we-
I, I'd also suggest that you meet with John sometime very soon, uh, like I say, he's not here tonight, cause he was on jury duty today, uh, to further discuss with him, uh, what additional things that we might need.
Well, what kind, what kind of detail, what, um, how much do you wanna see in a stormwater report? Because they can, I've seen stormwater reports that are very thick and very detailed with tons of calculations, I mean, uh, could the board give some guidance as far as how much detail you're looking forward, you're looking for in a stormwater report?
I've never seen a brief stormwater report.
I haven't either, yeah, unfortunately, no.
Given the sensitivity of, and, and some of the public comments, I mean, I think it's imperative that we show how we're gonna control runoff, runoff in situations that may happen, especially with gasoline, petroleum products being used, et cetera, so, and, and I think we-
Conservation.
Conservation may have a quick-
No, actually conservation's nothing to say.
Okay, all right, very good.
Cause we're far enough away from the wetlands.
Right, right, right.
No jurisdiction, but-
So obviously, obviously, that's a, I'm, I'm gonna have to have a conversation with the applicant's engineer as well, because I know that Scott Latour had sent me computer-generated renderings, but they're not to the level of detail of an, of an elevation plan, so I definitely, I, I have been in contact with their engineer, and he, he did a great job of adding things to this plan, so I can have a conversation, I'll, I'll, I'll have a conversation with the applicant, but also have a conversation with the, the engineer, um, who did this plan to, to get the level of detail that the board needs.
Cause that elevation of that building right now is higher than the con- condominiums and where the well is. So, water will come our way. I just wanted to point out-
It could, it could, but, but, by many, just, just, just looking at the plan, um, it's the grading of the site. Add, adding a building, you know, basically, there's already impervious, impervious area back there, so, um, I mean, the, the, the building is usually designed with, you know, a system of gutters or whatever to handle the water that falls on the roof, so I would make an argument that, um, because of the site, adding this building will, will, you know, just in my non-scientific opinion, would not add a ton to the, to the, uh, impervious surface on the site. It's, it's already pay, pretty much paved, hard-packed dirt, which acts a lot like concrete anyway, or asphalt, so I, I would argue that, it, it all depends on what the spargo view site will look like after construction.
Okay, but, excuse me, yep, stormwater report is an absolute necessity for this project by the EPA.
Hundred percent.
That is not a question, and if that means it's gonna be detailed, it's gonna be highly scientific, it's going to be long, cause there's no such thing as a short one, as somebody else has already said. That's, that is a requirement of the town's stormwater permit.
So, to your point, Peter, um, that is something that the applicant and the owner need to think about coming out of this meeting, is, um, the expenditure, the cost of doing a stormwater report for this project.
Right, and it's required because of the use of the property.
Yep.
That's-
Like oil-water separators, et cetera, for runoff from parked vehicles.
All kinds of things going on there, yep.
It's, it's intense, to say the least, but.
Through the chair, I had one question for the applicant, that, this existing building, it's just repair, are you gonna be selling bikes out of there?
Uh, probably not.
Okay.
Not at first, no.
The only reason I was going down that is, is I keep looking at the, the parking spaces, and there's two in the handicap. For a customer-based business, that doesn't seem like a lot of spaces for people to park.
Most of the people drop off their bikes and leave.
Okay, so, thanks, I appreciate it.
So there's no bays on the right-hand side of the existing building, or the proposed building?
No.
Might have some sound blocking, blocking a little bit, at least when they're working.
It's a major highway, I mean, there's over, I don't know the exact numbers of the traffic that goes by there.
I've done multiple studies sitting out there, and for me to control the noise, just the tractor trailers that are coming through the four-way and going down one-twenty-two, I've got probably nine hours sitting there just recording with my desktop machine. What I'm proposing doing there isn't gonna be any more noisy than one-twenty-two or the Four Corners, so.
And the, which, through Norm, the chair, your business hours are for that?
Eight to five.
Okay, so there'll be no repair or work during, through the night shift, none of that, okay, that was a question.
So what, so what days of the week, Scott, would that, would that be Monday through Saturday?
Monday through Friday until five, and then noon time on Saturdays, that's unregistered.
Thank you.
For that.
I just know, only reason I ask it, Norm, is there's a diesel mechanic in Sterling that works many shifts when he gets trucks in at night, so, it's a reason, I just, I wanna make sure we're clear on that, okay.
Um, I just got a quick question for Scott, um, you know, in the, um, you know, obviously stuff's gonna spill a little bit in the main building, but in the, um, proposed building, are you gonna do drainage in, in the flooring for oil spills, or are you gonna just do a flat floor?
We have minimal spills, we have all high-tech equipment, we have minimal spills.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying for, if you're spraying the floor off or something, where's all the water going, or if, if you're not doing that, then it's a little different, but I don't know if that's-
No, we don't-
For cleanup and stuff, yeah.
We don't spray our floors.
Okay. And then, um, I mean, there are, obviously, this sheet's got other stuff about all the trailers, which is kinda not Scott's issue, but the land owner's issue, and just where that's headed, I don't know if-
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Having done multiple sessions, just sitting out there and checking, how is it that two lots over, there's ten buses and multiple unregistered vehicles, that are commercial vehicles sitting over there, but yet at one ninety-one, that's being found upon? Cause the active corner lot has buses leaving at five in the morning and coming back at five, six o'clock at night, and there's ten buses there, and the trailers that are at one ninety-one Barry Paxton Road now are all registered and insured, so I'm not understanding where the conflict is. And I have a video of it, if you wanna see it. I counted eight cars unregistered and ten buses actively leaving there before seven in the morning.
What, I, I apologize, one ninety-one, is that, uh, at the corner of?
No, that's, that's, that's two seventeen, Tim, he's talking about at the corner.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I know what you're talking about.
Car Craft.
And if we're talking about sound, if we're talking about sound discrepancies, that, one bus was running for twenty minutes the other morning, and it's aimed towards the condos. So, I don't understand how we're judging one parcel and not another.
We don't have control over that parcel you're talking about, that's a building inspector and enforcement officer, we have no control of that, so my, my suggestion is if there is problems like that, please get in touch with Dave McCray in the, uh, building inspector's office.
I haven't heard of any problems with sound from the buses leaving in the morning. I believe they go on Pleasantale, or, when they leave, and they, when they come back, they might come off of Barry Paxton.
All I would suggest is, we don't have enforcement rights, the planning board doesn't, we only have jurisdictions for permitting, so.
Going to be building another new house right next to, to that, on Pleasantale.
Any other questions, comments?
Not across the street from the buses.
Some, I got a, a letter this last week saying they were gonna build, and we were abutters, so.
Oh, it's on, so it'll be same size as the garage, the buses behind it.
It's gonna be on Pleasantale.
It's gonna be on Pleasantale, though.
Right after the garages.
Right after the garages, but on the same side as the garage. Okay, because the other side, uh, has a ninety-nine, had a ninety-nine year, no build. So, how the heck they get around that?
Oh, Norm, do you need, need to make a motion to extend, or to continue the hearing?
Continue the public hearing.
Yeah, well, uh, one, one more time, any other questions, comments?
Are we able to move forward with the bike shop, with the existing building?
No, that's a special permitted use that's part of this.
Couple, couple more meetings, probably. Just for repair, the license for that, do you, do you get the ability to sell cars, or resale?
If I was to sell used, I'd have to apply for a license.
For another license, okay.
But there is, uh-
Yeah, there's tiers for it.
There's a new, there's a new auto, yeah, there's an auto sales place right next door to ours.
Yeah, no, I know, I'm just curious, just curious what it is, yeah.
Just about a year, two years ago, I think, something like that.
Unless he wants to just do that one.
Then this plan would have to be modified, we couldn't, we couldn't send this forward with this plan.
Right.
Correct.
So, I, I'm not gonna vote on a special permit with a plan in front of me that doesn't reflect what I'm actually gonna put a special permit through, that's just my opinion.
Anything further?
Um, do we wanna see plans for the cutout or for all the work that's gonna be done on the main building, or? Just go by what building inspector will deal with later?
Well, you know, part of it certainly would be up to the building inspector, but I think the sidewalk is gonna answer us a lot.
Okay.
We still like to see the details.
Well, yes, yeah. That that's, that's for them to work out with John and the engineers.
So does the board, so the board wants to see, obviously, building elevations for the proposed building, but the existing building. I mean, it's, they're not changing the height or the dimensions of that building, they're just reusing the existing building.
No, we don't need ex- we don't need elevations.
I don't need anything for that.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you've laid out. Anything within those walls needs, obviously, we go through the building inspector, but my question is on the parking and access for emergency vehicles, for fire department, et cetera, we should have them. That should be, if they're gonna, well, I guess it depends on the applicant and how they wanna proceed, if they wanna proceed with just the existing one-story and the bike shop and and. X the proposed building, then it it does simplify the process and and make it, I wanna use the word faster, but. It seems to be a little bit more straightforward with the proposed building and extension that I believe that, you know, that just. It's up to you, how how you wanna proceed.
If we can move forward, bike shop, that would be fine.
Just have to get an updated drawing for the next meeting, then, that's it, I guess. We can review it, close the hearing, and then decide on the special permit.
I'd still rather wait until the second, first of those meetings in May.
Well, that's what I mean, but we'd still wanna do a sidewalk, correct?
I think so, yes.
Yeah.
Um, Norm, just an FYI, there's three weeks between meetings, so the next meeting wouldn't be until May fourteenth.
Yes.
Isn't that, isn't that election?
Uh, Monday is the election.
Okay.
You would have to pay a couple second time for all the permits for the other building, too, if that's okay with you, yeah. Um, down the road or.
Well, the engineering drawing updates, too, this would have to be pulled. And just go with that standard drawing, that's part, cause this drawing will be included in the package, if I'm not mistaken, the special permit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so what would the board wanna see if the applicant chose to remove the proposed building and just go with? The motorcycle shop in the existing building, um, would the board still need to see a stormwater report?
I don't, i- is it gonna be paved all the way back to the proposed building, or is it just gonna be to those parking spaces?
Parking spaces.
I mean.
Excuse me, the change of use requires a stormwater report, period.
Whether it's motorcycle or anything else.
Exactly correct. The change of use makes it industrial according to the stormwater standards.
But it says it's a commercial building now.
It, it's becoming an industrial according to the stormwater standards.
You say that the EPA will see it that way, even though our bylaws don't state that.
Oh.
We we stated it's commercial, but the way that the EPA is going to see this is an industrial site for repairs, et cetera, and that's, you can have your engineer just double-check, I mean, and and. Go through that and then see what the what the requirements the state are, and if that's something. You know, if you're not building new, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean, um, if you're not building new, it is a little bit more tolerable. As far as what he's going to have to present, a little bit, but not a whole lot, so still a heavy document.
I have a question, are are you changing it to industrial, that?
No, 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 it's just for the EPA definition of stor- of the stormwater requirements, they're going to require it as though it's an industrial site.
Right, it's not being changed to an industrial zone, it's not, it's it's nothing to do with industrial as far as town of town of.
For anything on our end, it doesn't change, but that's strictly in their definite, the EPA's definition of an industrial site, correct.
Did, I just, cause I'm looking at this up close, this says gas, is there existing propane there now, or is that gonna be added?
There's, there's existing propane in the main building, yes.
Alright, so that gas and electric are in the back, then, is that what you put in?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so coming out of this, Tim, if I could, um, the applicant should have a conversation, the applicant notice should have a conversation. And have a conversation with their engineer in terms of what it would take to put together a stormwater report. And they may, you know, think about the cost of putting together a stormwater report, and whether that, whether or not that is a, uh, make or break. Uh, aspect of this project for them.
Yeah.
Cause it's not an inexpensive project, I wouldn't think.
It's a little better if you're, have an existing building and you're not performing a lot of construction, but again, correct, it is still not a tiny document, generally speaking.
No, it's not, there's a lot of calculations that have to go into it.
Okay, I just was trying to read these little letters where it said well, gas and electric. I didn't have a magnet for that.
Now, don't you wish Route forty-nine went by like it was supposed to, and gone all the way to New Hampshire? I make it so much easy for you, just a heck of this, go to New Hampshire, heck of a DEP.
Dick, you were just waiting for that opening, weren't you?
He's been sitting on it. One forty-nine bypass, man. So, um, I guess, again, I'll, continue the hearing.
Second. The main fourteenth at six thirty?
To May fourteenth at six thirty, yeah, that's what I'm gonna do.
With this, with this, with a site visit to be held prior to the meeting.
Correct.
That will be, that will be posted separately.
Yeah.
Uh, we have not done it that way in the past, we've actually done it as part of our meeting.
Yep, we adjourned to the site visit, then come back and. And then, so we basically open our meeting up as a site visit.
Right.
So are you gonna start the meeting at six thirty at the site, or are you gonna go to the site at six and plan to be back here for six thirty?
Uh, I.
Something like that, yeah.
Okay, so, so we'll post as a meeting at six o'clock at the site, and, okay, so I'm I'm kind of wondering. I'm gonna have to figure out how to post that with two different locations, but, so that's the intent, is to start out at the site at six o'clock. And once that's concluded, return to the library for the remainder of the meeting.
Is everybody available that early?
At six, yeah, yeah.
I'm looking right now.
With notice, yeah. Do you all have to go at the same time, or?
Yeah.
You said it's three weeks.
I've I've done.
It's three weeks to the next meeting, you said, so, that's plenty of time to.
Well, you know, it's it's three weeks, it's it's three weeks from the next meeting to the first meeting in May, is what Tamika was saying.
We had, we're just talking about the sidewalk prior to that May fourteenth meeting?
Correct.
On the same day, on the same day, though.
On the same day, so.
I'll drive back here.
No, there's three weeks, okay. Because if we're all on site, we have to, it's it's, it's.
It's a public meeting.
Public hearing, and we got, in this state, you gotta check all those boxes, and everybody's gotta know about it, and they gotta know that we're all on site. I know what you're saying, cause everybody could just go. But in that position where I just like, can you guys just walk the site, but unfortunately. At your convenience, is what I'm saying, like you have three weeks. It has to be a public, yeah. It's gotta be legit, okay.
Two.
Meeting law violation, and we end up, yeah, I'm not.
Okay, so the continuation, Tim, would be to May fourteenth at six PM on the site.
Correct.
To return to the regular meeting thereafter at the public library.
Yeah, we typically have just said we, uh, adjourned from the site meeting and returned to.
A regular meeting.
Yep, the planning board meeting in the, uh.
Okay.
Select board off room.
Okay.
Okay, I heard a motion, we have a second, second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
So, let's see one.
Thank you again, ladies. Yeah, thank you.
And hopefully, keep the rain away, please.
Yeah.
Why did I do that?
Peter, could you take the plans down, please?
Yeah.
You might get thirsty.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is active subdivisions, uh. Which I visited, uh, Renton Old Bryce.
Oh, my goodness.
And Bear Hill Two and Hilltop, and other than a couple of foundation, there ain't nothing going on.
Oh, I I got, I got John a little wound up, cause I did drive through Bryce Lemon, the phase off of one twenty-two A. And right at the beginning, the asphalt was collapsing from a large pothole, and then when you drove in, there were sides that were starting to go down, so. John's got, got, uh.
Kevin.
Kevin, thanks, Mr. Quinn, heading over there to take a look at it, I just was fearful from the moment that the underbase is getting washed.
There's some crazy, even in the center.
Okay, I saw the cracks started to worry me, cause I'm going like, after what we dealt with over on. No, the, uh, the two, I call them rock, rock, rock house, you know, off of fifty-six, the two Lenny. Subdivisions with those roads cracking and and caving in, I do not want that to happen at Bryce Lemon, cause it was washed out.
I'm expecting Kevin to get out there sometime this week, because when Tim emailed me about that, that was the morning of the snowstorm.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Last week, so I haven't heard anything, I have been checking my emails yesterday and today, Kevin hasn't responded yet, but he said when weather permits, he will get out there, so I'm thinking. He'll probably get out there sometime this week.
Yeah, this week's a good week to get out.
It definitely looks like there's some deterioration, like even in the main part of the roadway.
Yeah, and I I haven't had a chance going to drive around to the other side, I'm, that was gonna be my next sweep to see how that's holding up. The other side of Bryce Lemon.
It looked better, that that's all done.
Okay.
You know, other than Lindsay.
Yeah, all right, which are near work and they were working on it, yeah.
Oh, yeah, but there's no road building going on, you know, it's kind of surprise, bring the estates, nothing.
Yeah.
Uh, they've dug out for where apparently the roadway is gonna go, but it's two feet of water in it.
And he, Norm, did you see that the excavators, I think, finishing up a couple houses in Bryce Lemon, towards the front? I saw them back there, put, starting to put foundations in, I'm like, that's getting almost built out, point there's no more space left.
Look, it's, actually, right now, it has very, very little available, and there's no, no, nothing on like Hilltop Estates either. Other than the fact that this last storm took, they had a huge pine tree right at the beginning of it.
Yeah.
So.
Alright.
So that's that, uh, correspondence none, uh, town planning report.
Yeah, so the only thing I have, Norm, is the, um, the next agenda on the twenty-third, obviously, I'm not gonna be here, and the board is gonna have that be a business meeting, we did have an approval not required plan come in. Late last week, that will be on the next agenda, I will take a look at that tomorrow and process that, so. That's gonna be it, just a business meeting and an appro- and an A and R plan.
Um, if I may, John, don't, isn't there also the public hearing for the Intervale Road Citizens petition?
Oh, yes, thank you, Tamika, yes, yes, because that citizen petition came in too late to put onto this agenda, so there will be the public hearing for that other rezoning that Mr. Elbag wants to do.
Whoa, any chance we get a, I don't remember seeing that, is that?
It's, what, the Kappa property?
Yes.
Yeah, it was, it was actually previously approved at a town meeting, but never added to the zoning map, so yet something else that was previously approved but not added in.
On Intervale?
Yeah, yes, it's between, it's be, it's the property between the two properties that are currently zoned light industrial office up there.
Yeah, there are two, two parcels that are industrial, there's a little piece right in between.
Yeah.
It's residential, wants to change that to industrial.
Well, it already was changed, it just was added to the.
It already was, correct.
Oh, okay.
But there's, that, um, Anita can't find evidence that it it never got sent to the attorney general's office, so this is, this is a housekeeping item, more than anything.
So it's expired, then, right?
Yeah, that's why it has to go back to town meeting.
Has to go back to town meeting, you vote.
Yes.
Kappa, oh, what a nice name.
I'm assuming it's.
It was a great guy.
So, will this be, John, will this be another, um. House like we just did?
What do you mean, Tim?
It's a citizens petition?
Yeah.
Yes, it's another, it's another citizens petition by Mr. Elbag.
I gotta say something to the board about this, I'm about up to here with circumventing all of the bylaw subcommittees and and zoning by doing citizens petitions. I I'm.
Oh, but there's not much you can do about that, Tim, I mean, it is a legal mechanism and to get on, to get on the, uh, town meeting wall.
We don't have to support it, that's one way of saying it.
No, you don't have to, no, that's right, you don't have to.
That that's why I'm, I mean, this is the third or fourth one that's come through, and I'm getting to.
They're gonna keep coming.
Oh, exactly.
Now we're, now we're issuing decisions saying we support it, so now it's, we've empowered people to do that.
I know, and that's, damn it.
That's a good point, so, we're giving, we're adding fuel to a fire we don't want.
Exactly.
Potentially, yes, potentially.
Oh, for sure.
And take my vote back for? No.
No, no, no.
Well.
Next agenda item, public comment, any from, anyone in public?
After I kinda blew my cool, you know, being quite loud at our last meeting there, um. About Glenwood Road and Glenwood Place and all that, uh, not only did I receive, thank Anita very much. Special town meeting, November nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, I went back through my pile of minutes and come to find out. I wasn't around the minutes and also the special town meeting, I did not, I did not realize or remember or. That it went before and got voted. And I have to, I have to apologize that I, I was, I had a knee operation and and I, and went to, the frickin' thing went to smithereens, and I couldn't get around at all, so. I didn't come to the meetings, I didn't go to this one here, didn't know it, and I thank Anita for sending it to me, and that's what I was asking about, if that was what was sent to you. From John, if he handed that to you.
Yeah.
So, now, and I also feel that it was done not right, because the houses that. Where they originally should have been Glenwood Place or Glenwood Road and Glenwood. Place or whatever heck you wanna call it, should have been the other road that Elbag just changed the names from Williams' property that went to Town of Princeton. And, uh, instead of being that one in Glenwood. But, uh, so anyways, I I apologize for getting hot-headed, but there again, that's me. Now, now you're ready for hot head stuff?
Alright.
You're ready, are you, I am, uh, quite ticked off, A number one, because of the master plan. We haven't done a blooming thing about it for crying out loud, back in November, you said, we have three weeks, read it, I read it, did things. We were gonna have special meetings and everything else, nothing, nothing is, and I know what you guys are doing is trying to, hey, get the hell out of the planning board and we'll just sign it off.
Well, I said. Dick, what's hap- what's happened? I gave it, I realized that, after talking to C M R P C, that basically, we can't move forward with the master plan, because we don't have one of the key elements to it, which is the open space part.
We still need to do it, but that's not the point, I gave it to Janet anyways, and I'm waiting back from Dominique to get my. Master plan back with all the things in it, and I am going to say here, I am not leaving this organization, I'm staying, and I want meetings, I don't care. I don't want the town administrator, who can come on and say his name is Scott. I'm I'm getting just so frustrated for crying out loud, I want this planning board to have a say in this thing. Sit around, that's how you guys learn, that's how you do, that's how we stay, try to update, go through the damn thing. It doesn't have to be, not the tail end of it. So anyways, Janet's gonna get it back to me one way or another.
To your point, John, when are you back from vacation, the first week of May?
Yes, a- actually, the thirtieth.
Thirtieth, set something, let me make sure before I, before I get committed, cause I've I've still got my notes for what you and I were supposed to talk about with John, sitting in my, in my file. Let me see that. sitting in my, in my file, let me see that, um, like, May, that Monday, May sixth? Right now, I don't, I mean, I've got a GASH leadership call, but they're just gonna tell me that, uh, whatever. So if we wanna do something, I don't know what your Mondays are like, to sit with John and go through all the comments and get this thing knocked out?
Sure.
I mean, unfortunately, I mean, I could even do Friday the third, if that's convenient, well, that's right, you guys aren't in on Fridays. Um, Thursday the second, I'm available too, if we wanna set something in the morning. Cause I'm with Dick, I got, we, we've gotta sit down and go through the comments, cause I've got a bunch of them. I know Dick's got a bunch of them, and we gotta get these incorporated into this master plan. And is there any movement, I'm sorry, on, on the, uh, John, is there any movement on this open space, because?
Last thing I found, last thing I found out, Tim, is they're, they're putting together a final draft, and once I get my hands on that, I can send it to CMR PC, to Trish Settles, to see if, um, they can at least add the goals and objectives portion of that plan into the master plan, and that, from what I understand, that would suffice to satisfy that portion for now.
Did you get a firm commitment, cause I know when Norm and I sat on it, we kept hearing they're gonna get to it, they're gonna get to it, they're gonna get to it.
No, I, I, I've, I've reached out, and they said they're finalizing things, but I don't, I've gotta, I've gotta check back in with them, it's been a couple weeks.
Okay, that's it for me, I'm sorry.
I just have a high level question in regards to, um, um, some of the, just what I'm hearing, cause I think a lot of this was before I was here on the board. So Dick, so they put together this master plan, and then they said, hey, look at it, review it as a planning board. Some of, obviously before my time, but you had put together notes and you said, or you reviewed it in depth, put together comments, concerns, and then they just didn't encapsulate any of that? Is that?
No, no, that's.
The master plan was generated, uh, with the help of CMR PC and a master plan steering committee. Which was made up of.
About eight people.
Yeah, about eight people.
Okay.
Uh, myself, you were on it, Tim.
Yeah, I was on it, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can't even remember now, who else?
Leah was on it.
Yeah, Leah was on it, definitely. And so, and together, we put together this master plan. Uh, you know, they, they did the, I don't know, called electronic editing.
They did the heavy lifting.
Formating and all that.
The fun stuff, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, and they then presented it to us, uh, and then it's up to us to review it.
Okay.
As a planning board and see.
Okay.
If it's correct, if things need to be changed, or whatever.
Okay, I misunderstood, I thought they weren't taking any of our input for some reason, I thought, okay, I did, okay, I misunderstood, I apologize.
The, like I say, the, the open space portion has been definitely a holdup on this thing, and it's, you know, if you're missing one part that you have to have, that kinda.
Throws a whole thing out.
Yeah.
I got you. And Britain, Dick had a lot of good, they, they did an executive summary at the end. And, and to Dick's point, there was a lot of grammatical mistakes within it, and he did a phenomenal job of going through and correcting a lot of that. But in the end, there was a, on their executive summary, there was a lot of comments, and Dick went through them, and then I went through Dick's comments and added my comments, and there was a lot of similarity with like, this doesn't make sense, and that's what Dick and John and I were supposed to sit down and try to weed out, so we could get that back to CMR PC. And it was on me, I, we had a date set, and I unfortunately had some illness issues and couldn't make it to that meeting. So that was on me, that's why I wanted to try to get this back on track and get these done, but um, there is comments that are pretty significant in that executive summary, that need to be addressed.
Okay, and I appreciate the explanation, I just wondered high level, like how that was shaping out, so appreciate it, thank you.
It's, it's, it's a question. If I may.
Yes.
Can, you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, you broke out a little bit.
Okay, sorry, um, I have a question, Leah Whitman, two eighty's County Road, um, when we were on, when we were doing master plan, they were aware that open space was gonna come later, and that CMR PC had said that that was totally fine, um, I know open space, we're meeting nonstop, we have another meeting tomorrow night scheduled, um, to fi- to try to finalize everything, but I'm just kinda confused why CMR PC had told us that as master plan, that that piece was fine to come later, and now suddenly it's a holdup.
That's a good question, Leah, cause this was a, a meeting that Austin and I had with Trish, Janet, and also the transportation, uh, planning director, probably about a month to five weeks ago at this point. And we brought up the master plan, and I mentioned the comments that Dick and Tim had put forward in finalizing those, and that's when Trish brought up the aspect of open space and basically told us that we cannot submit the master plan for endorsement or adoption officially, because open space and recreation is one of the key elements, and they at least need, because they at least need some goals and objectives under the executive summary at the end, under that table, so yeah, I'm, I don't know, again, I'm new to this, I'm new to this, um, master plan coming at the end here, but yeah, that's, that's what we were told at a meeting in Austin's office.
Okay, that's fine, I, I, I will communicate that tomorrow, I'm, I don't know if the rest of the group knows that or not, I imagine maybe, I, I don't know for sure, it's the kind of the first I've officially heard of it, I've heard, you know, the shots been fired kind of in random meetings, um, and finger pointing, but I was on master plan and open space, and distinctly remember, um, master plan being told that as long, you know, that open space, it was fine, that because it was coming, that it was not gonna be an issue, so I'll follow up tomorrow.
Yeah, and I had, I had emailed Melissa, um, I think a few weeks ago, and she said that they were approaching a final draft, and that we could potentially have something soon, which would, would potentially satisfy what CMR PC was looking for, which would be great, so yeah, there's, yeah, I don't, obviously, I don't know any of the conversations that happened before, I just, I just know what CMR PC told us, so it's, it's, there seems to be some confusion going on as far as, you know, what, what, what needs to be provided to actually get the master plan finalized enough for submission to the state? Or CMR PC, rather.
Okay, no, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, anything else?
And I think the stuff you guys wrote down, John gave me a copy, and it's, it's pretty good stuff, you know, it's, um, and going forward, if all of a sudden they hand it back to you, and now we gotta do something, I guess the ball's in our court, so whenever you guys do tack that, you know, if it's gonna be in the next month, you guys will be, will be ready to go, of course. I would expect after we get done with the meeting with John, there'd be like a summary of everything that was agreed upon. And then that should be presented to the board.
Yep.
It's my thought.
And then, and the good thing is that once this is completed and finalized, and I, I think the minimum is that CMR PC wants to see from what I was told, um, that it doesn't have to be a full open space and recreation section at this point. They're saying that as long as we have some goals and objectives added to the table at the back of the document, that that would satisfy them. So, um, you know, I reached out to Melissa at the time shortly after that meeting to see if, um, they had something, and she, and she basically assured me that they're very, very close, and they're formulating a final draft, so it, it seems to be close, and we're right on the cusp of being able to add that to satisfy what CMR PC's looking for, at least.
Okay. I'll entertain the motion.
I'll make a motion to a closed meeting, eight ten.
A second motion?
Do I have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we are adjourned.
Do you have a question about the one ninety-one, um, Berry Paxton?
Well, the public hearing's closed on that.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted to make sure everything was closed.
We can't comment on it, it's, it's, it's a public hearing, we can't give you any feedback, you can say something, but we can't give you any feedback.
When I moved in, uh, two eleven Berry Paxton, three years ago, there were two tractor trailer trucks there, and the daycare center was in operation. Today, there's over half a dozen tractor trailer trucks, they're going in and coming out weekly, and what has changed that allows that to happen? Who would, who would enforce the requirements of that property? What, what it seems.
The building commissioner.
Prove of use.
The building commissioner.
I think you just add the building commissioner is, is already aware of that, he's been notified by another resident, um, so that is already on his radar, I, I don't know the status of it, but it has been brought to his attention.
Of depends who's living where.
And I would ask him about it, call him and ask him.
Okay, I just wanted a, a person to go, go see.
That's the guy, he's the enforcement officer for the, uh, town of Rottland.
Okay.
When it comes to zoning issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.